Start with some public recognition and then move on. We have a presentation from Ms. Watson who will give us an update on the progress of our STEAM program and the wonderful things happening in that department. Then we'll get into our agenda and then we'll have to break for some legal matters and executive. So anyone from the public would like to speak at this time. Okay, very good. Ms. Watson, over to you. Take it away.
I brought my girl squad with me, so they're not here to speak. They're just here to be recognized.
Quality reinforcement.
Absolutely. I guess I'll start. My PowerPoint is, leaves, I guess, something to be desired in terms of typing because I thought pictures probably speak better than words could. But I do want to start by recognizing the ladies that are here. In my board reports, I've been updating that we've been meeting with a girls' STEM club over the last two-plus months. We had a team formed at Evergreen Elementary, a team formed at Robert D. Wilson Elementary, and a team formed at the middle school. I became aware of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Girls' STEM competition three years ago in my first year in this position, and we started to form teams in March of that year. And in March of that year, we were shut down due to COVID, so we never got to go to competition. And it's been something that I've really been chomping at the bit, wanting to bring back and waiting for the right time. And we were able to do it this year in person. They offered last year the program virtually, but anybody who knows anything about STEAM or STEM, it's hands-on and the experience is best suited in person. So I asked for volunteers to help take this gigantic first bite out of this endeavor. And I really, I want to recognize the ladies that stepped up to help with this. We have Stacy Lukowski. She is the gifted teacher and also does intervention supports at Evergreen Elementary, formerly a 4th grade teacher at Evergreen. And for that, I met her for the first time in the middle school as a math teacher. We have Mary Beth Grandinetti. She's a 4th grade teacher extraordinaire from Evergreen Elementary. And she and Stacy were the two-point people with the 40 girls from Evergreen that signed up to be part of the program. Then we have Mrs. Williams. She is learning support teacher for grades 6, 7, and 8 in our middle school. And we have her daughter Nicole Williams, who is an aspiring science teacher and is one of the substitutes in our school district. She does a fantastic job. And just to get experience with working with kids, with young ladies particularly in these areas, she volunteered and donated all of her time to work with her mom, to work with the girls in the middle school. And that's extremely special, so I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Williams. And then we have Maria Miller. She is my ride or die, my pillar of strength. There were a lot of after-school activities being supported by teachers at Robert D. Wilson, and the days were conflicting, so we didn't have any teacher, any teachers who were available to join us on the days that we were going to meet. So Mrs. Miller and I were the coaches of the Robert D. Wilson team, and she has been the best support for me through the whole process in terms of administratively and when I'm having nervous breakdowns and I'm trying to, not that these ladies didn't do that too, because they were there for me, but just I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Miller because she donated her time to work with me. So we had 40 girls at the Evergreen School. We had 12, 13, excuse me, 13 girls at the middle school, and we had 20 girls at Robert D. Wilson who signed up. It was an open invitation for any girl who wanted to join, who had interest, so we did not turn any students away. The girls were registered in teams of three or less, and there were two divisions. It was grades 4, 5, 6, and a 7 and 8 division. So the middle school girls, if they had teammates that were 6th and 7th grade or 6th, 7th, and 8th grade mixed, they competed in the higher division. And then all of the elementary girls competed in the lower division. We went to the competition this past Saturday at Valley View High School, and our Western Wayne teams represented almost three-quarters of the participants in the competition, which I thought was awesome. We came out in a Western Wayne girls' army of young, you know, engineers and programmers and mathematicians and scientists. We took, I'm going to say, there were two other 4th grade students who participated, and we had, I'm going to say about 30 4th grade students total participate for the first year, which I think is fantastic. The sooner we get these kids involved, the better it is. And it's a program that we would like to see come to fruition every single year and grow from the progress and the baseline that we made this year. So there's some smiling faces. You can see all the blue shirts, and those are all our girls. And it was just, it was a stressful day. The students, I don't think our girls have ever felt such rigorous academic competitive pressure before. And there were some tears, there were some meltdowns, some adult meltdowns privately amongst the warriors that are here. But it was just a phenomenal experience, and almost every student came away saying that they, they enjoyed it, they can't wait to try again next year, and they know things that they would do to make it better. And I don't think that there's anything better than that, to know where you stand and to want to be your personal best in competition with yourself and also with others. So just say yes. All girls who are interested were able to participate in the program. We did not turn anyone away. 78 girls total from RDW, Evergreen, and Western Wayne Middle School were present, and that included, you know, there were special education students and gifted education students and regular education students, and it was, it was pretty cool. First-ever elementary academic competition, so we set, we set a benchmark there. Just say yes. We had four teacher volunteers who had little to no STEM experience, and that was something I also want to point out. Nicole has a little bit of a science background. She's kind of, we nerd out together a little bit. But this, not only was this an academically rigorous and challenging endeavor for our girls, but it was also pretty eye-opening and a rigorous and challenging endeavor for our, you know, our staff that was involved. And they never hesitated. I sent out an email, I asked for help. I was instantly, you know, greeted with replies, and I just want to say thank you again to the ladies that are here. One administrator with minimal STEM experience, but I have to give a shout out because Mrs. Miller is a, she's a woman of, I don't want to say like a farmer, but like, she's a, she's a STEM girl. Like, she's a STEM girl in the real world where she's working with her hands and she's maintaining a farm and has a skill set so far beyond anything that, you know, even I would have in terms of real-world applicability of this stuff, and she was an asset to our girls. And we had over 100 parents in attendance at Valley View this weekend to support their daughters, and I think that was, that was awesome. I'm a competitor. You know, your body fails kind of as you get older, and now I have to rely on the mind instead of the body for the competition. But if we can start to pack stands for academic competitions and endeavors and have the support that we see for athletics and other types of competitions, I think that that is something that will just make us that much better and that much stronger. And, you know, we want our students at Western Wayne to be obsessed with their academics just as they might be with their other interests and their activities. So I think that was wonderful, and the parents were, were fantastic. They actually, when they announced the teams to go out to compete for the engineering competition, they stopped announcing what school district they were from because unfortunately we, we came out with an army, and there were three big, you know, waves of cheers and things. And then, you know, the other schools, I think they felt bad. So we just started cheering for everyone because sportsmanship was bad too. So you can see here, mistakes are proof that you are trying, and there's pictures. I could have put 100 pages together. These pictures are from the engineering competition. The girls competed in four competitions. Engineering, they had to make a Rub Goldberg machine, which is a really, really silly, multi-step way of achieving a very simple goal. And it's intended to test the engineering thought process and creation. And that was something really hard for the girls to wrap their heads around. Turning on the switch on a power, a power strip, that was the goal of the Rub Goldberg machine. And if I heard it once, I heard it a thousand times. Why don't you just turn the switch on? Like, why do you have to have this machine that does all of these things that leads up to it? And it's because you're testing the theoretical ability of the girls to, you know, think outside of the box of, you know, the logic of it to create something that they wouldn't see in a real-world scenario. So you can see all sorts of different things. We did it right at Western Wayne. The girls were responsible 100% for all of their work. We didn't send the projects home until the week before the competition. We didn't have, you know, I know, I am not a parent, but I have nephews, and I know I would be like the first person that would want to jump in and tell them what to fix and, you know, suggest this and that, and they had none of that. They worked in the after-school clubs, and it was all, all them. We did not place at all. Not one of our teams placed, and I am okay with that. I, I struggled with that a little bit on the day of, but I know we did it right. We supported our girls. They learned through making mistakes, and they learned the process of troubleshooting, which is the most critical piece of engineering. And when you see other students present and they're looking to the stands because they don't know what to do when their machine fails after the first attempt, and you see our girls immediately jumping in and tweaking things and, and turning things and adding things, that's the valuable skill that they needed to learn. So we are absolutely making mistakes and, but I'm very proud of that. I'm very, very proud of the work that was done. And we are going to have a Western Wayne-only award ceremony because recognition is part of, you know, losing is not fun. So we are, I got the scores from the, the competition head at Valley View, and we have our winners for Western Wayne, so we will go through the, the awards process for just them in a little celebration after school. So that's the Girls' STEM Program or After-School Program. Again, we hope to initiate that year after year and just build that program. We also have a little offering. I felt bad. I like the idea of cultivating STEM for girls because I know that that's, maybe there isn't a lot of diversity in some of those fields, and we want the, our girls to know that they are empowered to do those things. But I also like equity, and I think the boys deserve a shot too, you know, to be able to do these hands-on things because they have futures ahead of them as well. So I came across the Rail Riders, the Wilkes-First Grand Rail Riders. They offer two-day baseball games in the spring that are geared towards student field trips, and this year's two games have a STEM theme to them. And with that, there's a contest that the, the students that participate, they build a trebuchet, which is a medieval version of a catapult that doesn't really have any propellant. It just uses a counterweight with an arm and a sling to fire like tar balls and stuff back in the day. So they have a competition for, there's, there are two divisions, kindergarten through 6th grade and 7th grade through 12th grade. And the students get to go on the field right before the game starts, and they get to fire a baseball. And then the teams that fire the farthest get to compete for the grand champion, and the grand champion gets to go back. They get a full pack of tickets for their family for a night game, and they get to fire it before the fireworks, and it's super fun. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to get some of our boys involved. Our 5th grade classes from both Evergreen and RD Wilson are attending the May 25th Rail Riders game as their field trip, so we selected two boys' teams from each of the buildings. They're going to build the trebuchets, and they will fire them in the competition in front of their peers. It's not as broad as the girls' club, but it kind of came about, you know, it fell into my lap a little bit last minute, and with the girls' program, we only had a certain amount of time, but that's coming up. So I can and I will. Four teams of 5th grade boys from RDW and Evergreen Elementary will participate, and we have so graciously been given some help from Mr. Pat Farley and some high school students. They're going to serve as mentors for these boys, and they're going to do their trebuchet build day on Saturday, May 14. So the 16 boys are going to come. Many staff members who are interested, we're going to come, we're going to get them pizza. They're going to use the, the equipment in the shops. They're going to build their trebuchets, they're going to practice them, and then they're going to fire them in front of their peers, and we'll see what happens with that. So I met with both of those, I'm serving as the coach for those two teams because they're manageable and small enough, so I met with both teams this week, and they're super excited. I taught them measure twice, cut once. That was our first lesson today and yesterday, and so I think they're learning some good things, and they're excited to get their hands on some tools. And thanks in advance to Mr. Farley and some of his students. Also wanted to give a shout out. I, I was contacted by Colleen Carmody. She's one of our, one of our family, because she was a senior teachers and the department chair in the high school. She does, she did an event, I think it was today, in the district office, so some of you here may have been seeing the, the end game of this. But she reached out to me and she asked, invited me to come and to look at what the girls were doing and the boys were doing and kind of participate because it's STEAM-y. And I told her when I went to see what the kids were doing, I wanted to give her credit and a shout out tonight because it really is something pretty interesting and pretty cool. It's a little STEAM-y. She, in years past, before COVID, there would be a fashion show for the fashion design students, and things kind of went a little bit awry, obviously with COVID. And the way Colleen decided to run it this year was a model that she calls the catwalk, but if you've ever seen Project Runway, it was run pretty much exactly like that. The girls were presented with, show this video. There are two senior girls who are in that top-level fashion design. So those two senior girls competed against each other, and they each had a team. So you can see here is Riley Sheen, she's a senior, and you can see Kathy Shepherd here. And they had their teams of girls, and you can kind of see them behind them, and they were working on either side of a divider on the stage. And they were given a challenge. They had to design and craft, make four looks according to the theme that they were presented. And they had a day and a half to do this. So design them and sew them and fit them to their models, and then they were modeled for the district office staff this afternoon. I don't know how that went, but there was also a little video that was put together to show the theme. It's a one-minute video, so I'll just show you that quickly. But the video showed the theme, and it was all about how, you know, it was about elegance and opulence, and there were, you know, rules and certain fabrics and textiles, and sewing techniques had to be integrated into those four looks, and I just thought it was super cool. And then Colleen and I got talking about future potential for these types of things and how certain students can be, like, other pockets of students could be integrated, like, you know, graphic design or the video production classes or, you know, like even drafting classes and technical drawing and all sorts of things. So she and I, we're little, we're having all these little brain populations that are going on, so just wanted to give a shout out for that. This slide says I can and I will, and I just wanted to take a minute just to tell you about three things that I'm doing to try to improve myself as a leader of STEM initiatives and STEAM initiatives in the district. The last one is for selfish reasons, so you're doing me a service. I am currently in my doctoral research portion of the doctoral program at Wilkes, and I need a little kick in the butt, so I figured if I told you that I was going to be working through that this summer, that it would push me as hard as I need to be pushed to put the effort in. Ms. Denike is also in that program with me, and she and I have relied on each other. But I'm studying, what my, my studies are, are about professional development, how to best serve teachers, help grow them, and provide them the, the supports that they need as they are working through their careers. And that's a passion of mine and a focus of mine. That's my professional focus, and I think that fits really well with my job here at Western Wayne. And now that I said I'm going to do that this summer, I have to, so thank you for that. I'm also on a committee. I applied to be part of the PENCEL Committee, Pennsylvania Science Leadership Educators' Leadership Network. And I spent three days in Harrisburg in the last month and a half working with Pennsylvania Department of Education and WestEd, which is a consulting firm that's sponsored by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. They worked with California State and other states getting their teachers and staff prepared to adopt the next-generation science standards in pre-K through 12. And our state is approving those standards for implementation in Pennsylvania three years from now. So I'm ahead of the curve when it comes to what's coming our way for science education and have been working with members of our intermediate unit as well as with this company, WestEd, and the Department of Ed to put our staff in the very best position they can be in to serve our students for what's coming. And then I also became a certified teacher for Ignite Worldwide, and it is a think tank of females in the STEM field. It's West Coast-based, and they offer virtual field trips and interactions with women in the STEM fields. And what that allows me to do is I can host these Ignite events for our students and have them interact with women who do like crazy stuff in the STEM fields to inspire them. So I started a small group. I have about 12 girls in the middle in the high school right now in a Google Classroom, and I just post some of the offerings that they have, and then the girls reach out to me, and if they're interested, I coordinate it and I run the session. The most recent one, we had five middle school girls and four high school girls participate, and they got to meet the chief food engineer, who was the point person to create Pepsi Max, which is a soda, popular soda brand. And it was just, you know, we did a Zoom with them, and they walked them through like a little engineering kind of practice thing, and just to broaden horizons. And my message is home is great, and we love our community, and we want to cultivate students and families and staying here, but it's also nice to have some outside perspectives of things, especially for our older girls, because it's a wide world out there, and, you know, you never know what good ideas you can steal and bring back home, so. Last thing quickly, I'm sorry. Pre-K through 5. This year, we worked with our pre-K through 5 teachers, getting them and leading them to being certified in Project Lead the Way. They will endure the training to become Project Lead the Way certified teachers, all special ed and regular ed teachers in pre-K through 5 in both elementaries. That training will take place after school gets out in June, and that will be, that will kind of be the pillar of science instruction at the elementary level, and it is fully aligned with the new standards that will be approved this July at the state level. Also, OpenSciEd Pilot, a shout out to Nicole Mucevich. She's a 6th grade science teacher in the middle school. She's piloting approved program through OpenSciEd, which is also aligned with the new standards. It's what WestEd produced and gave to California State teachers when they adopted these standards 10 years ago, so shout out to her. And then also some work being done in the automotive and manufacturing pathways at the high school level, adding things like diesel mechanics and collision repair, machinery, machinist type stuff, amplifying the electrical components of that program as well as the engineering. So, and that is not something that I'm just working on, that's something that's been a team effort, but just to give you a heads up. So we can and we will, and that's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Liz, and thank you to all the ladies here for your efforts and contribution to help our STEM program really blossom and to help our girls throughout that tremendous experience. I mean, that's wonderful, it really is. So thank you so much. Means a lot. And we just wanted to give everyone here a little taste as to, a little bit as to what's going on throughout the buildings in regards, in regards to STEAM and STEM, developing our curriculum, modifying it to meet the demand of the workforce, and just prepare our students for their future. So there'll be more to come down the road, and again, we were not anywhere near where we are today just a few years ago. It's, it's amazing how much of our programs have really blossomed and started from the ground up to really be intertwined with our everyday freaking. Again, that's, that's because of the efforts of our teachers and Ms. Watson and our administration. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And as we tell the students, when they're recognized at a, at a board meeting, you don't need to stay for the rest of this.
Have a good night, everyone.
Does anybody have any questions for the board?
You ladies can go. Good night.
None of you want to stay? This is riving.
Good night.
Okay. Right into the agenda. We have approval minutes, treasuries report, approval of bills. We'll have our student recognition. Both senior recognition, principals', principals' awards, as well as FBLA recognition for students and our advisor. We'll have our recognition of the public thereafter. And then moving down to, we have our enrollment report, which is up 10 from last month, we're at 18.6. And then number 11, adoption of the budget. Do we want to discuss that at the end of the agenda, or do we want to get right into that right now?
Well, if you want to talk about it now. Let's get rolling. Well, I'm going to start with, I know last week when Rose gave her presentation, and I was looking at the, the past three years' budgets, the two prior and the upcoming, there was a gap between two budgets ago and this prior budget. And there wasn't as large of a gap as I thought. After Rose and Jamie and I met the other day, debt service in the audit report wasn't included in that budget number. Debt service is another four million. So the increase wasn't from 43 million up to 48 in one year. It was really, it's about a million-dollar jump each year, which still is a million dollars, but it's not as dramatic as what I first thought when we got together. So that was good in that respect. We talked about it, we looked at some of the ones that did jump for this upcoming year, and the biggest one, as we all know, is the charter school enrollment. Rose did another little breakdown of where we were for the past five years, and I think it went from 71 four years ago, somewhere around 71. We were as high as 106 this year, we're down to like 95, which is good, but that, that's a big issue, and we all know that. So that's one of the big hits for this upcoming budget. The, the health insurance, most of the things that were big-ticket items were addressed in that presentation. So health insurance is an 8.8 increase, which is about $550,000. The consortium is having some issues. We talked about that, where if schools start to pull out of the consortium, that's only going to increase our premiums. One already is decided possibly to pull, so we could be even looking at higher premiums at that point. And then just some of the little things like utilities. Rose said she's going to look into, especially at RD with the gas that we thought would be a windfall if it's turning the other way. So after going through that, oh, and then on the other side, we, we talked about the revenues for these past couple of years. We've had a windfall of monies coming in, the SIR funds as we know, and some of those others, and those are pretty much going away after this upcoming year. So one of the things I asked you, Rose, was if you knew of anything coming for this upcoming budget year that...
Great.
Yeah.
Great. And just the SIR funds that are, you know, we discussed, and that was part of the presentation last week, and what's left of those. I don't know of any newer grants coming about. You know, I talked to Matt a little bit about it, but nothing else that we can foresee at this point. And we do have through the end, our September of '24 to spend the third part, the third day of the SIR, the SIR funds, but we, you know, we have our application into the state on that, and hopefully we'll have our approval soon. We don't, we can receive them yet. No, hopefully soon so that we can start those funds off.
So we've been fortunate the past couple of years where after every audit year, we've had these unforeseen revenues come in, and turned out, we turned out better than we had anticipated, but I think those funds, those monies are, are going to run dry. So now we are looking at probably deficits going forward. And the breakdown that Rose gave, we had it actually, we were sort of, if we did different tiers, no, at the different levels of 1.5 to, I got it. Yeah, so when we met, we talked about how the deficit was going to be about 2.6 million with no increase in tax. And I mentioned 65, 66 percent, two-thirds of our budget is salaries. So 3% increase on salaries right there is 2% on, oh, there's nothing else we can do about the, the contract. So breaking it down, we looked at some other percentages, dropping it to 299, which would increase our tax revenue by about 830,000. 249 would increase at 690, I'm just rounding it. 1 and 1/2 would increase at 415, 1% 277. So at a minimum, I mean, at first we talked, Jamie and Rose and I, I mean, we're starting at 299. That's where we're starting, or that's what we feel. Now, there's a number that I feel we can lower, but I'm starting at 299 right now, just knowing what's coming down the road. just knowing what's coming down the road. So, that's our initial proposal.
I think looking back and looking forward, that 299 number made sense to me. None of us want to go to the max that we can do, I don't think, the 34 or whatever. Because it can kind of build on you if you don't make an increase now. I think we have to do something through situations beyond our control, the inflationary pressures and things that are on us. And, you know, we're going to have to do something, we can't carry a huge deficit, you know, going forward. And if we don't do something this year, next year will probably be worse.
Now, one of the things that we talked about in our meeting was how every year, and I felt the same way, where it was doing bloom on the budget. And then it turns out the audit's done, it's like, well, it wasn't doing bloom. Which is tough to set next year's increase knowing how the past history has gone. But again, I just go back to, we had these extra monies that we received. It was helping offset some of those budgetary expenses that we had. So, if those go away, these deficits probably will hit. And we still have our debt service, that's still four years in advance at between 3.5 to 4 million in the upcoming four years. So, I don't think we should totally hit the brakes and not increase it at all because it is going to, you lose a year and I could see it quickly snowballing. And I think we're definitely going to hit our fund balance this year, knowing Rose and Jamie talked about this upcoming budget here. So, that's the start. You know the numbers, you got 550 just in premiums alone. We have 2.5, and I know we're going to talk about looking at the potential of trying to get some of those kids that are in charter school back. And if we can get half of those kids back, I mean, that's going to leave you having the pressure of having to raise tax. That really should be the primary focus right now. We have to do something about that, like now, to get that shored up. If we could, you know, but the problem is we, by the time we get that done, we already have to set the budget.
So, like 2.99, we're going to have 3.4. Are we still growing the deficit at those numbers?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Rose did, let's see, so scenario, scenario four here, which would be a 299 increase, we'd still have a deficit of 1.8 million. I don't think that, I don't think that's going to happen. I think it's going to be still about a million.
Right.
I think we're still going to get some windfall. But if we're already at 1.8 million, a 3% 299 increase, that tells you right there it's going to happen next year and the next year.
I think, and we've also, the last, at least two years, we've asked to borrow or taken money from, or planned on taking money from fund balance and we've kind of lucked out that revenues have come in, kind of, maybe to some degree unexpected and we've been able to use that rather than hit that fund balance. But like you said, that's going to, that can't continue forever. It's unlikely, at some point that's going to, that's going to dry out.
Eventually, we're going to need to start doing more capital improvements. I mean, we're good right now. I would say, I wouldn't advise doing, looking into trying to issue another bond and add any more debt service for the next, until we can take care of these...
To the end of our debt.
Yeah, yeah. Get those knocked out and then see where fund balance is and then for new capital projects. But I think the facility, that is, we're in decent shape overall.
It is, we definitely have some areas that we need to address. The tough part is now, we do have some of those SFR funds that we can utilize for some of the bigger ticket items, but we're really trying to figure out to what extent is it definitely needed at this point. So then, so for example, the cooling towers, you know, the sewer plant. So, we're having some more, well, we'll see, one of the line items is for the contract to do an assessment down at the sewer plant, see to what extent, you know, we do have to do something at this point for it. We had one quote that was to replace it and build some redundancy with the, as apparently stands in its capacity, it was over $2 million. And then the lowest quote was just to do some upgrades and improvements was over $500,000. So, we want to see to what extent that we really need to do one or the other, if anything at all. So, same thing with the, you know, ventilation system here on this campus. So, we're doing some more analysis to see what kind of life expectancy we can get out of these items at this point. We've kind of tapped the brakes, I mean, once we saw the SFR comes in, came in, we had a list of future projects that, you know, we knew we were going to need to address at a certain point on the goal table, let's try to hit X, Y, and Z because it fell within the parameters of what SFRs allows. But if we could potentially use those funds in other places and not have to do that immediately, then that's kind of where we're at right now. So, we're still sitting through some of those items. But yeah, there's definitely, there are some needs that we'll be discussing, but we're not ready to put those out immediately.
So, those SFR funds can cover those costs?
Some of it. Some of it, like school safety measures, heating, ventilation, cooling, building envelope. You know, we were able to cover the windows and doors, we could fill an envelope, it improves air quality. A lot of those measures we can tackle, but we can't, I don't, we're trying to creatively word it so that we could potentially get the sewer plant incorporated into that, but that's been a little difficult. So, we're just trying to sit through some of that, I guess, the fine tuning what we're able to do, you know, or if we could supplement in one area and then make for things in another area, maybe that's a possibility too. Going back to the, excuse me, the charter school situation. Now, there's been legislation put out the past five, six, seven, 10 years trying to cap or limit the amount of expense a district has per student, per pupil to pay to these charters and cyber charter schools, which has failed consistently. There's current, there are current bills out there that are at the house level that they don't believe will pass, even just, for example, instead of paying the full amount, you would pay 70% of whatever it would have been, or a flat rate per student across the state. But the lobbyists for the cyber charters is just tremendous and they can't get it through. So, the only thing that has the potential to go through is greater accountability for those institutions to have in terms of assessments, state reporting, auditing, et cetera. Nothing to benefit us in particular. So, that's currently where we're at. Who knows, maybe that will change, but it doesn't, it doesn't look good at the moment. So, but we actually met administratively today to discuss, again, pounding the pavement, contacting families, reaching out, making sure we're getting as many kids back as possible. We're going to sit down again, as soon as the school year ends, try to come up maybe a little different approach than what we're doing to try to get some more kids back in seats.
So, is the kind of kids that came back to charter?
I bet I'm not certain of exactly where they came from. They, I don't know off the top of my head. And then years ago, this is going back prior to what Rose did, the charter school kids, it was down to like in the 40s, I remember 40. And that was with a student enrollment that was much higher than where we're at now. So, the percentage of kids in charter versus that were in the district was even greater from a percentage standpoint. So, and again, we had a more collective effort. So, I know there's been talk on the board to try to get something going and we do, we need to get something going.
Well, I'll be honest, and COVID was a big driver of that.
Oh, yeah, I saw those numbers. They were still up though prior, I mean, it wasn't 40, it was like in the 70s. So, we still had, we take 30 students times 25 grand a student, it's still high.
It's here.
Yep.
I mean, that can, that can cover a good portion of debt.
Yep.
Put us.
Yep.
Again, it'd be great if we can get assistance from the state to cap it or somehow limit what we're pushing out.
So, I'm sorry?
I would count on it. We've got to do what we can.
Are we going to discuss this now about the, about setting up a committee for this? Because what we understand, we all understand that building principals and everyone else have other jobs to do. I feel that we're 2.5, 2.5 million dollar deficit deserves a full-time person on this. There's different ways to go at it now, I think that what we choose to handle this is going to have to work closely with guys because they're going to need to know what this student is interested in. And that kid wanted the business and an institutionalized item. And I think we can bring a lot of kids back, especially if we curtail the hybrid, you know, find if these kids are interested, being able to bring them in. If the parents can't bring them during the day, will have they be able to incorporate a full day of school for them somehow?
And we have been created with a lot of kids' schedules in that regard. One of the reasons why, you know, we want to implement some of these STEAM programs is for this very reason. We want to demonstrate what we have to offer here for kids rather than sending them out.
I think the magic to what has been done here is more than fair to a principal or a salary. This is a big job, this is a big job.
This is huge. And I'm quite honest, I think more needs to be done at the state level. I'm not trying to push it off, but we need to do what we can.
We have to do what we can.
Correct. So, the fresh set of eyes, so you're a fresh, a new person and nothing against the people who have been doing this over the years, but I think they're pulled in different directions where whoever is, whoever's chosen, isn't their primary objective, you know. And it would be a summer thing, because I think that's what happened in the past, right? It was really an effort that was absolutely...
That was a big summer so that we can pull these kids in when schools, you know, the school year begins again.
So, that's why.
I think that you're going to, we're going to find, at least from my previous experience, that there are a variety of reasons why some of the students aren't here. We're going to find that it's going to be different answers for different ones that we approach, that it's not necessarily have anything to do with the quality of the education that we provide here. I think it has a lot to do with students who want to be in control of their schedule or not come to school and things like that. And also some of them were induced by what some of the charter schools were offering as far as equipment and other things that they got. Some people saw that dangling in front of them. Hopefully that kind of thing will go away. That's from a few years ago. I mean, my information's not current, but I know some of the issues for things like children who didn't want to come to school and parents wanting to take the easy way out.
Can I just ask a question here? Because Mr. Collins, I have children in charter and I think your rationale is a little behind and outdated. I didn't want to put my children in charter. I chose to on a number of reasons. And it wasn't because I wanted to stay home every day with them. It's such an inconvenience. But I chose because of the education, nobody dangled anything in front of me. They got supplies. If you look at the numbers, it's staggering. At our virtual academy, where you had 18 in July and we had 88 in charter. So, we should have been reacting to this in July, but we haven't. Mike, you asked a question, 10 did return from March to April. Okay? And so, we are behind the ball on this two years now with the charter. It's time to get something done because it's alarming at the cost, but it was always approached to this board that your numbers are going to go up because we followed an illegal mask mandate. That was one part of it. It's not the whole part of it, but it's a large piece. It's also, you know, I reached out to a couple of families that have been in charter for two years. Western Wayne never reached out to them. They had four children, that's $200,000 in two years. Never were they reached out to. I've had children in charter, never heard a letter from Western Wayne. The date for charter re-enrollment has already come and gone. So, to say to work on this in the summer, you're too late. Great work on it, absolutely, these numbers have to come down. But this should have been looked at in July, when you have 88 in charter and 18 in the virtual academy. And yes, the virtual academy for the elementary is, is definitely not a good education.
Why are you saying July?
Well, because when you have the numbers, July is what I started with.
Right.
And you have 18 people in Western Wayne Virtual Academy. In July, you had 88 already enrolled for charter.
You said the enrollment, pre-enrollment has already passed.
It has, but you can enroll at any point, but we're behind the ball.
I'm trying to figure out.
When you guys are saying, well, we need to get on this in the summer, it's already late.
You say get on it sooner.
A lot sooner.
Yeah, like now.
And I appreciate your comments, I was trying to say, I know there's a variety.
Oh, there is, and you're right, Mr. Collins, there's a lot of varieties. I didn't want my children to go to charter. And I had them pulled for a number of reasons.
Right.
So, you're right, there's a large number of reasons. And unfortunately, masks had nothing to do with it. Right? For my family, for my family, okay?
I think it may have for some and there may have been some...
It was a lot. When you look at the numbers and when we did not approve any religious exemptions or mask mandates, it went up 25 people. Well, that's almost what, 400, 500,000 right there.
But Brittany, going back to Jamie's point also, there are families though who do have, I'm saying your family.
Oh, no, I get it.
But who do, if there is a school avoidance issue, and then when we try to bring them back, we're liable for holding our truancy policy.
And I, and I understand that, but no letter is going out. That's the point I'm trying to make.
I guess the benefit of potentially having some more legislation come down with those cyber schools are more common vote for truancy.
Look, I'm not a charter fan, I understand the truancy, I get it. My question is, why haven't we done something sooner to these families? Even a letter, hey, we miss you at Western Wayne.
It's typically not done by a letter, it's typically a phone call.
Well, it could be done anyway, right? I know other districts send letters.
Well, the good thing is...
I mean, I'm just saying, for 2.5 million part of the budget, it's huge, it needs to be addressed.
And we do reach out, we call one by one, we break it up and we make...
I've reached out to five families, they've never heard from Western Wayne in two years.
The point is, we got to work.
Right, that's the point, we can argue back and forth on that.
We know what happened or, you know, we knew. So, now we're moving forward, we're turning the page, and we're going to start making a collaborative effort. Whoever we get in here needs to, I mean, it's going to be an effort because whoever it is has to know all the services we have, all the ins and outs, because yeah, every family's different, right? And they have different agendas and why they are here or aren't here. Whoever it is that we hire has to know everything about this school.
Is it better hiring somebody or is it just streamlining a process? Would you all just want to see the process streamlined? Because let me just say this too about the virtual academy numbers, Brittany. Those are full-time students enrolled in there. That does not account for the hybrid students.
Right.
That have a traditional thing. So, when you look at like September, there were more than six students at the high school in our VLA program. That number's a little bit deceiving, I think the numbers that we're giving to you were full-time numbers. So, I do apologize.
No, no, but even so, the numbers are really off, you know, between charter and virtual. And that just, you know, needs to be looked at, that's all I'm stating.
Whatever the current process is right now, it's not work.
Right.
So, that's, that's the thing. So, if, yeah, if you have a committee that you sit down and you try to understand what the process is, then we got to come up with something that's different than what the current process is.
I think we can improve upon what we have with existing staff and streamline it. Yeah, how? Because nothing's, it's been two years and nothing's... No, I'm not saying, no, I'm not saying principals, I'm not saying principals, but counselors know who these students are. Counselors, I'm sorry, Mr. Collins, I know this is a little...
No, no, I was just going to bring up that we have counselors who work 10 days over the summer.
Yeah. Who work traditional hours beyond the school year.
Right.
Where they also serve as case managers.
And who would perhaps know some of these Houston families from previous...
You can get it anytime, they've had enrollment for three weeks on that.
No, but when is it? When's the school year end? June seventeenth?
Oh, no, we're done. June third.
June third.
And we can get done at midnight.
What is, is where it is there just lie?
If we work at a.
So, what do we need to do to get the counselors to make these contacts for the appropriate level of the student?
I, I think it needs to be done earlier, though. It doesn't need to be done in, in July. Saying they're done in June third. Once June fourth comes, the charter kids are like, woo-hoo, it's summer break. Their parents are, are working with them, doing that sort of stuff. They're not thinking about the school year. It needs to be done before charter ends. That's, as a parent, I don't wanna think about that then. I wanna think about it prior to it ending. It needs to happen now until the end of the school year versus during the summer.
The issue with that would be that we need additional staff.
Well, and that's what we're saying. If we need additional staff to get those people back.
We're totally wrong. We're, we're in a hand, you stop wanting to do this.
So, so I think with the method, we're all buying it, but let's, let's hire. I'm okay with spending fifty thousand dollars to save one point two million.
Yeah.
That, that's what I'm getting at. I think everybody's in agreement that we're okay with spending money to save a lot more.
I one point two million, you're saying that's a hundred percent.
No, it's like half of it. And I'm just throwing that out.
Yeah. You're not, you're never gonna let them off because there's kids that don't wanna come to school. Parents are okay with it.
You're not, we could, I mean, I don't know this off the top of my head, but I'm telling you, there are many students on this list who do not want to come to a traditional setting. They don't wanna be in a classroom from eight to three. They want to be, and listen, I can say this because my, my oldest nephew is in that house. He wants to log on at eight o'clock at night, realize that he has four assignments to do. He has three weeks to do them. He'll do them whenever he wants. No one's sitting over him forcing him to do this. That is what we are hearing from many of these families who don't want to come back.
Can we make something where our own is more attractive to them? Our own virtual academy being more attractive sounds like what would address the things. What would those parents say? What can we do here at Western Wayne that would be superior to what you're getting in your cyber?
Well, so there's.
That we can do here.
So, there's two problems to that. With a regular education student, maybe there is some flexibility. But then you have to look at who's going to be grading those assignments, and they would not have access to that teacher. When you talk about special education, those are students that then would have to have access to speech, OT, all those supplemental services. So, that means paying a team to do those after hours so that that student would have access to that. I don't think it's quite as simplistic as maybe we're kind of thinking it is for many of those students on this list.
But I think, why, why don't we, this could go back and forth for a while. I, I think, why don't we get a committee together? We'll, we'll sit down, we'll set a time to meet, discuss, because I think we need to focus on what it is we're gonna do with the budget or at least get a sense for, for next week. And then we'll set a time to meet. Is it, do we have any takers on the committee?
That's a lot. Tell her now I'm going from the seventh to the twentieth.
Excuse me. Does that include people from the community? I understand that the Essers funds.
Yeah, that's.
I understand the Essers fund as part of how we're supposed to decide how we spend the money. The stakeholders are supposed to be involved.
Associate Essers.
No, no. But I mean, generally speaking, are we including the community that we're trying to coax back?
Well, we're all members of the community.
Sure. But you're a board member. That's a different, a different type of a community commitment.
Through our comprehensive planning committee, we do incorporate members of the community.
Okay. So, like, by members, you mean like when Mr. Howe is part of the stakeholder and he's also a board member? Or you mean somebody who's separate? Like, when you have something that you wanna include stakeholders, do you go out into the community that you're trying to talk to? The people that have children that are in that subset? Are we?
We do have, we do have, what if that two parents on there currently?
Okay. So, is there room for an additional outreach?
The problem with, with a committee like this, we're talking about confidentiality and student information. So, that might be a little, there's potential, there might be some concerns there, but we can consider that for sure. But I don't wanna say definitely by one way or another, just because we, we have to determine what it is we're discussing first.
Yeah.
We all agree it's a big deal. We've just gotta, we've just gotta get out and take it.
And, and a small committee, a small committee can get together and get it resolved better than.
Right.
A hundred people all throwing ideas out there. So, it should be a committee of board members with administrators who form. And then if the public wants to know, a committee member's going to then present to everybody what we've discussed, period.
So, we don't have to make, we can think about that tonight. I will follow up, um, in the email to see, well, as a reminder, please let me know if you're available to discuss. Charter school, charter school, and then we'll, we'll set a time that we want to get that established.
I would, my thing is always, I work during the day, so it's, that's my only problem. But I would do it.
Me, I check my texts more than my Western Wayne emails, so if you text me instead.
I, I can be on a committee, and if it's on a Tuesday or Thursday, I can be up here at any point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be willing, I'd like to see the numbers, though, here with, okay, if we have to add a teacher, we have to, you know. I'd like to understand how many people are really special needs and how many staff members, you know, I mean, we're throwing what ifs out there. I wanna see what these what ifs are, and then we can make a decision. But yeah, so I'd be on it to, to at least see what that entails. I think Rose should be in on it as well.
Yeah, they end up. Yeah, they end up. I guess I'm wrong.
The committee should be only like three, three people max. So, I mean, I'll, I'll step off if, if you guys want. You know, I don't wanna, you know, we only need three people.
I, I can handle the finance side of it.
So, Dana, you, you take care of that. I, I'm gonna.
No, 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 that's all right. That's Gary.
Were you on that or did Jamie?
I'm willing, I mean, as far as.
Jamie's got the, and he'd be strong because of his.
Yeah. I, I just like the personal touch that it's people who've had contact with the students before, that we match up the right people to make the contacts.
Right.
That's one of the things I'm interested in. And that's why hiring one person doesn't necessarily solve the problem in that we have to match up, you know, high school people with high school kids sometimes, or maybe they moved them in elementary. They haven't been back for a few years. Maybe it's somebody they knew before. But I just think that if there's some kind of relationship there, you're gonna have a better opportunity.
Somebody can do it. I would do it.
So, Jamie, Dana, and Gary for now. Is that okay?
If Gary can't make it, somebody will.
Yeah, I'll come.
That, that's, we have enough others that can do it. So, they're going back to the budget.
I know too.
But I mean, that's a big, that's a big part of the budget. So, you know, we've got all these percentages with an unknown of what the outcome's. Personally, I feel I can settle in between two and two and a half. I know that number for health insurance isn't changing, so two percent is only gonna cover the increase on those premiums. I'm not going below two. I can tell you that. I'm not voting for something under two. Personally, I think I can settle in at two and a half, which is four nine.
And so, you, but your reasoning for that too, because you don't, you should feel comfortable. It's kind of a field with measure to not go to the three point four, right?
Well, I mean, three point four. I, I just don't want next year to look at it and say, if the audit's complete, we didn't have to hit fund balance, and we still raised tax.
And you're saying that because we've done that twice.
Yeah. And, and everybody else sees that too and says, well, what the heck are we raising taxes for? It's ridiculous.
But we think how.
But we had those Essers funds, and we had those reinfalls that came, was it a couple of years ago?
I think the, the, that really was a big chunk that helped with.
The last piece of Evergreen. That was like the one that really kicked, or, or was it the health insurance?
Oh, yes.
Like, that's really the start of what helped us. And then some of those other funds came in afterwards, and.
Yeah, the changes we made into the contract two contracts ago really has helped us over the last few years. The, you know, I touched on that in the presentation, the amount even back to, you know, I think it was fifteen, sixteen school year was when we made the change. Our budget for retirees' health coverage goes to a million over, or over a million dollars. That's down to less than two hundred thousand now. Those decreases over the last few years have helped us with funding what we needed to fund as far as like salary increases and healthcare increases. And that was designed that way when we made those changes in the contract, that we knew that those, those decreases could help us fund. But we're at the end of that now. I mean, we're down to under, there's only a few retirees who have not aged out of that, that contractual obligation right now. But there's no, so there's no more savings there. And I don't wanna say savings. No more offsets there, I should say. That's helped us over the last few years. Those are gone.
I'm more inclined to be just that.
But if the Essers funds are not replaced, no matter what we do, we're still gonna have a big shortfall moving forward.
I, I would imagine. Now, those budgets with the collection, local tax revenue collection rate is, you're conservative.
Conservative on that.
And, and I, I think it could be higher. So, that way, we're not like, again, whoa. We did a lot better than we thought. But historically, that number's been moving up. So, we've had a lot more taxpayers pay their taxes. Now, if that turns around and things change and people aren't paying their taxes, then, then we could have. I don't know, what'd you say this past year? That we're at ninety four percent of the way this year?
Ninety point five percent is the collection rate that I use for current taxes.
I know. But what, what are we at currently as well? I think you said ninety three. I mean, our actual collection rate is higher than that ninety and a half though.
Yeah, a little bit. We, um, because we collected everything, current is finished out of January. And I think budget wise, I, I was over budget by about sixty thousand from my ninety percent. So, it was, it was, maybe it was ninety one. It was, it's either ninety point five. It was close. But there was a sixty thousand dollar difference to the good as far as elections for current.
And the tax amounts that we have in the budget for next year is flat compared? Or is including all of the new homes that are being purchased and not purchased built?
It is assessments through April. So, I could go onto the county's website and get the updated assessments. And I'll continue to do that till we do the finalized budget in June. But at, the numbers that I've used for this presentation were the county assessments, um, up to date numbers through April of this year. So, I've been including that.
If a new house is built, does it get taxed? Does the, the rate come through as it's being built or not until it's finished when the, when it's signed off?
When this is typically like a T S issue.
So, there's a lot of homes that are being built right now that aren't even included in that tax rate.
There was a lot more. I think this year's slowed down a little. Do you agree? Compared to last year or the year before, for both? A little.
One bare land is slowing down.
But now they're starting to build on that bare land, is my point. So, if that wasn't included in the number because it wasn't occupiable yet, then it, it wouldn't be in her tax number.
And those changes come throughout the year. So, if something goes, a reassessment during the year, we would get, we got this called a white sheet that comes from the county where the change happens, and the tax clerk gets that, and we would get a copy of it. But it's no way, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't know that when we're doing finalized number.
Right. Absolutely.
We have to go by what the assessments are in June when we're doing our finalized budget. And that is what is based for the tax duplicates that go out. That's set on the day you guys make the final decision, the final budget in June. Those numbers are, are submitted to the county, and that's what they use to run the tax.
It's on a, it's dated, seventy seven in the county.
Right. Yeah. That's my point.
Well, I, I don't think anybody, no, I don't think anybody's got a number. There's, there's gonna be one. That's what it's gonna be, so, between.
What would you like me to put in for the agenda items? I have it set by Tuesday.
Well, we've left it also, really change, right? This is why we're fine. It's the only thing that we really have a chance to make a.
The biggest dent would be that.
And that's not gonna happen immediately, no matter what we do.
Right. It might not even be this year.
Rose, you, you think you're comfortable at what number still? Where, where, where do you think we should be? I know your proposal is three point four.
Right. I'm still proposing a three point four at this point. Again, it's the tentative budget. I know we talk about that every year. And, you know, if things change between now and, and June, we can look at revising that or changing those numbers. But I still think based on where we're at and the expenses that we're seeing, I still think I would recommend the three point four. But of course, that's up to you. So, whatever direction you give me.
And Jeff, you're comfortable staying at around under three?
Well, I'm, yeah, because of how things have, you know, every year we thought, and it didn't. So, I'm willing to roll dice and say, like I said, I'm, I'm okay with. My floor is really two four nine, but if the board was like, well.
Yeah, I, I would be better at the two four nine number that he has. I was thinking two nine nine, two four nine was my kind of range where I thought we would have to go and then hope for the best.
Last year, I know we had to go under the proposed amount. And on getting fund balance, and we did okay because of the income. I think we need to stay closer to three point four. I'd be at the two point nine nine. I think, I think that's pragmatic. Because then next year, if things do play out, we won't have to do this hard, right?
Yeah, I really think, like you say, you have to look at more than one year in a way.
Yeah. We gotta be forward looking. And we know we're gonna be in a mess if we do nothing several years out.
And nothing, I mean, you all are living it too. Like, you know, expenses are going down. Our utilities keep going up. Our daily living expenses are going up. Everyone keeps increasing.
Rose, no disrespect to you, you know.
No, no.
You know, your recommendation, I respect that. You know, we had that discussion.
Absolutely.
Council member?
I, I wanna do a wait and see, because it was every year, wait and see. We did it. Let's wait and see.
That's why.
If next year it turns out we're two four nine, if that's where we land and it didn't work out, shame on us. We should've went three four. And we could say, Rose, you were right.
I know. That's kind of what we're doing from last year, aren't we? Are we already kind of doing that from last year?
We are, sure.
Last year, we.
And we've, because we've been. We've been sprinkling it up. It, it was two last year. It's been progressively going up.
Right.
But we are still taking fund balance.
Yeah.
Just not to the extent that we go.
Right.
So, we're, we're, we're dipping that.
I'm going to the two point four nine and then in June.
We can relook at it again during our work session for you.
That's all I thought about it for now.
Right.
You have to raise. If everybody throws out a number, the majority of whatever that percent is, that's what Rose should put down. So, what do we got?
Two four nine.
And we have to adjust it, look adjust it.
Exactly.
Up or down?
Yes.
We're willing to look at it.
Okay. All right. So, I'll put the agenda item together based on the two point four nine increase for the tentative budget. That's what we're looking at for the next week's budget. Yep, thanks.
Yeah, I thank you guys.
I do appreciate Jeff and Jamie coming in on Monday just to deeper dive into everything to, you know, go through the numbers and just be able to see and understand a little bit more. That I appreciate that.
I appreciate paid education.
Well, if we wouldn't realist, we wouldn't, yeah, well, it's, it's never gonna be zero.
Right.
So, if we were half, again, I, I need half. We're half of that. That's one point two five. So, we would still be in a deficit.
Well, I told Jeff this is kind of what I do at work. And if you just, I look at it, if you have nine or ten people, and you have three that are definitely not coming back, you have three that maybe will come back. And you have four that maybe, maybe will come back. So, you know, you, you look at it as almost half, right? You have a good chance to get people back. That's just some real competition that we have. If you're trying to like figure out how to get a hundred. If you're gonna get all hundreds, you're not gonna get all.
No, I understand.
You might get third, you might get fourth.
Yeah, but if you get thirty, that's, that's a lot more.
Right. Every bit helps.
Bring it back, back to the seventy where we were before.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work, Jeff, Jamie, Rose. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Number twelve is the adoption of the twenty-two twenty-three tax resolutions. Thirteen. Thirteen, we have the printing of tax duplicates, which is a slight increase per duplicate for next school year. Fourteen, we have a recommendation for the designation of depositories for the next school year and the following, so twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. We're still waiting to get some information from Wayne Bank-
Yes, I, our RFPs out to the local banks, and that, the deadline for that is noon on Friday, so I'll have that number to, to put into the finalized budget, through the general fund, bank with me.
So, Wayne Bank NBT, we've worked with for the last several years, and we have worked with Wayne Bank-
Paulson National Bank is currently the general fund account, and they are one of the, the offices that I will receive.
Thank you, Rose. Number fifteen is the list of graduates for June. Sixteen, we have to determine who we would like to appoint as the PSBA legislative liaison for next school year. And then seventeen is, are, are the voting delegates for PSBA delegate assembly. So I know last year, the, the voting delegates were Rick and Denise, and the legislative representative was Denise. I don't know what we think, I don't know if we want to stick with that format, or does anybody else have, um, want to jump at that? Anybody want to raise a hand?
I would put-
I would put Rick and Dana in those positions.
Right.
So Rick will be the representative liaison, and then you'll also be, you and Dana will be the voting delegates. Thank you. Number eighteen, we need to solicit nominations for the board treasurer, and then elect the board treasurer.
Jeffrey, are you ready to run that again? You're okay, you're okay, Dana?
Seventeen is the board treasurer's compensation there. Number twenty is the bonding for the board treasurer. Twenty-five thousand dollars, that was off the two fifty. Twenty-one, last year, the board treasurer's salary was donated, and he-
Yep, I'll give Rose the-
Thank you, Jeff, it's very kind. That's what is taking place next week. Jeff, bring it down. Number twenty-two is the exoneration of the tax collectors from the twenty-twenty-one duplicates, which we will have to discuss. Number twenty-four, it'll just give you a brief update as to what we're looking into. Once we look at, I'm sorry, we do have to discuss in executive, the group of members. Twenty-three is the appointment of tax collectors for twenty-twenty-two. Twenty-five is the acceptance of the deputy tax collectors for sale in South Canaan and Canaan Townships.
Each of the collectors will have to do that before the start of the art tax season, but these are the three that we have so far. We've reached out to all the collectors that are on twenty-three, so you get that information from them.
What is that, if they don't?
Yeah, they would, if they become incapacitated, something like that, if they can, like second in command, that we could deal with this person who's appointed as deputy, and they would have access to their checking accounts and, and the tax duplicates.
Twenty-six is the extracurricular bus runs with the group and Jenkins and their rates. Twenty-seven, we do have two van drivers, which is a big help. Twenty-eight, we have a contract, a van contract to lay night to Evergreen. Twenty-nine is our special counsel contract with King Spry, we've been using for several years, and their rates, that we book slightly, maybe five dollars for each, the attorney and paraprofessional. District solicitor, looking to point Elvis Law Group, and the rate there as well. Thirty-one, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, Title IX Coordinator, Affirmative Action Compliance Officer, Right to Know Officer, all at the direction of Dr. LaRosa. Thirty-four, this is an annual motion that we have to approve to, to make sure we're in compliance with industry, the Disabilities Act, and all the regulations that go with that. Thirty-five, we have some waivers of expulsion, some student incidents at the high school. Thirty-six, we have an agreement with Friendship House, again, and that rate is the same as last year. Those are for the mental health services throughout the district. Thirty-seven, Blackboard Connect, so this is our mass communication system, the text, email, phone call chain. Thirty-eight is N-Tech Engineering, this is the group that will come in to do our assessment of the sewer plant, and to determine what extent we need to do any updates or replacements. Thirty-nine is our annual agreement with Wayne Memorial Health Centers to review IEP, IEP students and their eligibility for medical access. That's a fifteen dollars per IEP. Number forty is the contract with our liner, nursing, again, to review IEP students who are eligible for medical access for next school year. Again, we can be willing, those groups for, as far back as actually, for those. Forty-one is the job description for plant operator, that's the position that was discussed for wastewater situations into the retirement, as we see coming up. That was our succession plan moving forward, and that's just the first step in getting that all rolling. Maybe that was, that job description was sent out this week.
This week, yeah.
Forty-two is an overnight field trip for Junior Academy of Science. Forty-three, we have two facilities use requests, one for the grant recital, and another one for the Wayne County Commissioners Town Hall meeting on reassessment at Evergreen. We will waive that fee for the commissioners, and that's for the town hall meeting. Forty-four, we're waiting on any potential substitutes we may have, that's forty-four A. Forty-four B, we have the list of resignations and retirements. Letter C, we have letter, letters of assurances for subs, custodians, ten month secretaries, aides, et cetera, assuring them of positions for next school year. Letter D, we have the hourly rates for substitutes, teachers, aides, secretaries, and all of the others. Letter E, we have an appointment for next school year, we can further discuss in, in executive, if maybe, but this, this individual has been with us as a long-term sub for the past two years, and that's for language interpretation.
In what position?
It's a, as a result of a retirement. Letter F is an extended school year paraprofessional. Letter G is the assistant director for musical for next year. Letter H is our district dentist, with a contract for that, six dollars per student. And then letter I is our district physician for both physicals and coverage at home football And then letter J, we have an appointment for a mentor, as listed there. We have our informational dates coming up, she's quite lengthy, busy.
We did change the last day of school.
Yeah, so the last day of school will now be Friday, with graduation that evening.
I know people have been asking if it was gonna be changed or not.
Yeah, so we will, we will put out, put out the notice pretty far down.
It'll still Friday night?
Friday night, the tenth.
It wasn't gonna be Thursday.
It was gonna be Thursday night, and now it's Friday the tenth, because of that snow day last week.
Correct, exactly.
Good question.
Yeah, right.
A group that comes in and gives us an estimate on the sewer point, right? And then anything, if they, if anything tied to anybody that's determined, actually, doesn't operate, so then we're gonna be there.
Ron Frank did some research, asked the companies around the area that do that type of work, so he began on this group, they came in, we met with them first, we went through, he had a couple meetings with them, and then eventually they sent us the proposed contract that we felt that was-
So just make sure that practice and that we get it, do it now.
I believe you're down towards Holstert, correct?
Yeah, or we would have to do a project of that size, and it would be a sealed bid process, yeah. Yeah, this is just an independent evaluation that we have.
Do you have something on that from the test?
Dana, do you have the date and time of that town hall meeting at Evergreen? Yeah.
So, and we're looking to have, again, something similar done with our Coolidge Tower, the ACs and our demolition system, just to see to what it's doing.
Thank you.
May or may not have to replace it. Any other questions on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we'll, we'll break for executive at this time.